Members, we have a callum. I call to order the special meeting of the finance committee. Members, as you take part in the meeting, please keep the Zoom video on and show your faces. And during the meeting, please use the Zoom virtual background with the specified color. Starting from today, the Finance Committee will hold eight special meetings over five days with twenty one sessions. According to our usual practice for meeting health in the same morning or afternoon, for the sessions to be held in the same morning or afternoon that they will count as one meeting. The meetings are to examine the estimates twenty twenty two to twenty three of the government. The purpose of the examination is to make sure that provisions sought would not exceed the funding required for implementing various policies. Before the start of each session, I will first invite members to indicate their wish to ask questions. And then I'll invite the relevant directors of Bureau, Bureau to read out a short statement and then members could ask questions. Before the meeting, members submitted over eight hundred written questions on the estimate. The government has undertaken to provide written reply to questions that are in order before the relevant session. I would decide on the speaking time limit for each member. When I see how many members wish to speak, I would like to remind members that your questions should be directly related to the estimates. If members wish to follow up on the written replies of the government, please first quote the reply number at the top right hand corner. For example, CSB O one. If members are unable to ask questions on the written replies at the meeting, members may submit written supplementary questions. The supplementary questions must be limited to following up on the written replies of the administration. And members could use the relevant form to submit the supplementary questions to the secretary before the end of the meeting on the day. The form has been sent email to members on the first of April this year. And then the administration will try to provide replies to the supplementary questions before the third budget meeting on the fourth of April. Now, fourth of May, I'd like to welcome the Secretary for the Civil Service and his team to the meeting. Now, I'll invite members to indicate whether you wish to speak. I want to allow for members to speak in an order, so please clear the raised hand indications first. Now, for members who wish to speak, please use the raised hand feature of Zoom to so indicate. I will first invite the secretary to make a short statement. Secretary. Chairman, members, thank you. Among the matters related to the civil service in the twenty twenty two to twenty three draft estimates of expenditure, I would like to focus my introduction on three items. One, the first civil service establishment. The government's target of zero growth in the civil service establishment will remain unchanged in twenty twenty two to twenty three with the aim of ensuring the sustainability of public finances. The projected civil service establishment by end March twenty twenty three will be about nine one hundred and ninety seven thousand posts. We encourage Bureau and departments to enhance effectiveness and efficiency through reprioritization, internal redeployment and streamlining of work processes so that the workload can be coped with even without increase in civil service establishment. The second item is on the creation of time limited jobs under the anti epidemic fund. To relieve the worsening unemployment situation due to the epidemic and the anti epidemic features measures, the government has earmarked thirteen point two billion dollars under the anti epidemic fund in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one to create sixty thousand time limited jobs in the public and private sectors for government, for people of different skill sets and academic qualifications. As at the end of January twenty twenty two, around sixty thousand jobs have been created under the two rounds of the job creation scheme, with half of the jobs being created in the government and the other half in the non governmental sector. Among the jobs already created, around forty eight thousand jobs have been filled while the recruitment of the remaining twelve thousand jobs is in progress or will commence shortly. In view of the persistently high unemployment rate, the government has earmarked in February twenty twenty two an additional funding of six point six billion dollars under the latest rung of anti epidemic fund for the creation of another thirty thousand time limited jobs. Relevant government departments are leasing with the non governmental organizations or relevant associations under their purview to formulate details of the additional jobs. The third item is about financial provisions. I'd like to speak on two aspects. One, in the supplement of the policy address, there's a mention of enhancing training on national affairs and understanding of the constitution. So in twenty twenty two to twenty three, we reserved to two thousand twenty nine billion dollars on national studies, which is a five point eight billion dollars higher than the original estimates of the previous year representing a twenty five percent increase. And then in the twenty twenty two to twenty three draft estimates of expenditure, we've reserved over two point seven billion dollars for the government to continue to improve the medical and dental services for civil service eligible persons, including pensioners. About one point oh five billion dollars out of this provision is for providing medical and dental services, families' clinic and government dental clinics. About from meeting the operating expenses of the clinics, the provision will also be used for strengthening manpower and setting up additional stress specialized dental surgeries. We've also reserved over one point six six billion dollars for the payment and reimbursement of medical fees and hospital charges to beat expenses and reimbursement on medical fees, which are not entirely predictable. So that's the end of my speech. I welcome questions from members. Now, Mr. China Feng, Mr. Dominic Chan, B. And various other members, including Mr. Kingsley, Mr. Ronic Chan, Miss Elizabeth Court. While each member will have four minutes, so other members will not get a chance because we only have one hour, because the House Committee finished a bit late. So the next session will start at six, four forty two. Mr. Chen Hao Feng first, four minutes for questions and answers. CSB O O five. A question by Dr. Mr. Chow Su Chong. For non civil service contract staff, they are employed at different years and then annexe. For those who have continued service of five and ten years, there are some three thousand three hundred people. Now, the Bureau used to say that if we have non permanent posts and we will create a non civil service post for the purpose, but these people have three thousand plus people have served for more than five years. How come they could not become employed on civil service status rather than keeping them as a non civil service contract staff, which would make changes here? Thank you. There are several reasons why we hire non civil service contracts up. One is because there are cease no needs and second, this affected by market movements such as trading funds and also the worker involved less than the standard working hours. And then also their posts are under review and changes is possible. So for those who've been in a post for a relative longer period is because their working hours are less than those for civil servants. And then there are others whose posts are under review. And then there are some posts in trading funds and affected by market volatility. So, and of course, if the jobs are time limited, then they will be, you know, deleted, the posts will be deleted later. But then in other cases, some same person may have been hired for a relative long time, but under different contracts. So we will continue to look at the situation and where there is a scope, we will turn those posts into civil service posts instead of keeping them as non civil service contract posts. Now, a follow up, please. I see. In some cases, the, you know, the post of the civil service, the civil service contract was kept for a long time. Saying that dependent housing, the EMSD, efficiency unit, LCSD and so on, you know, and the posts have been in place for more than ten years. Is it because they don't have enough posts in the establishment? And so that's why you use this N C S E post. Well, for example, for the Department of Health, they have health supervisors and then the post office, they have some assistants doing certain sorting work and they work less than the working hours of civil servants. For example, kinder services or mail sorting service, they that's very much subject to the market situation. If for these jobs, if we use a civil service post is not cost effective. And that's the reason why we use N C S E posts. But of course, we have to monitor the situation closely. If there is standing need and we could use a civil service post, then we will consider that. Thank you. Next, Mr. Dominic Lee. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on C S B O two, who one is my own question. Now, during the Black Tide violence and there civil servants, there were civil servants who came out to oppose the government. They put up posts on the Lenin War and then they even fought against the police. And then at the riot on the twenty first of July, there were one hundred civil servants, including A O, who signed a joint petition anonymously to come up openly against the government. So in the past few years, I asked how many disciplinary hearings you had and handled and then the outcome. And I was shocked by your reply. You say that in the past five years, only one thousand and eighty civil servants were punished with formal disciplinary action and only one hundred and forty civil servants were removed from the service. So in five years, only one thousand eighty civil servants breached the rule. How is it possible? If you just consider the number of civil servants thinking about in this rise and then there was some one hundred A Os signing a joint petition and there are just about seven hundred A O. So it's a high percentage. And A Os are the crème de la crème in the government and that's how they behaved. So you can imagine what it's like with the general civil servants. You know, the civil service secrets Facebook page is still operating and then internal information is always posted there. So it's not possible that there are just one thousand and eighty civil servants, you know, bridging the rules in five years. And and then for some six hundred cases or half of the cases took place before twenty nineteen. So from, it seems that from twenty nineteen, instead of seeing more cases, we see just over a hundred cases a year, which is unreasonable. Starting from last year, civil servants have to take the O's or make a declaration. But then in the whole civil service, only just one hundred civil servants had to leave the service because they refused to sign the declaration. Can you, do you believe that out of the whole civil service, only just eight hundred people would not pledge allegiance to the central authorities? Now, now it's like last year and the government required people to use the leave home app to go to work. Just on the very first morning, there were some one hundreds, some citizens who were arrested for using a fake leave home safe app. So have you looked into civil servants bridging the reference rules, regulations? And to be more specific, people who took part in those assemblies or who posted on Lenin Wars? And what about A Os who signed a joint petition and others who gave internal information to the secret civil service secrets Facebook page for dissemination? Have you looked into that? How, okay, how do you explain there are just one thousand civil servants in five years who've been disciplined?
Okay, you have raised several questions. First on the figures. In our reply, we said in the past five financial years, there were one thousand and eighty civil servants were punished with formal disciplinary action. And seventy eight were removed from the post and sixty two were asked to retire. And then there were one thousand and five hundred who were punished after some summary procedures. So there were summary procedures, there were the formal disciplinary action. In the past five years, two thousand nine hundred and thirty four committed crimes were punished. And one hundred and forty of them were removed from their office. So these are the figures. Secondly, if we receive complaints involving suspected breach of rules, we will follow them up seriously. While depending on the severity of the cases, we would decide whether we should resort to summary proceedings or formal disciplinary action. That's point number two. Number three, last year, we have also in relation to new recruits and serving civil servants, ask them to sign declaration and make a note. And that was completed. And to natural fact, one hundred or so colleagues refused to take the oath. All of them left the civil servants. And fourthly, in relation to our civil service code, what that was set out clearly in the requirement on the declaration of oath. We set out clearly our requirements on civil servants and during our anti epidemic work, the civil servants took the lead in actually complying with the requirements of vaccine pass and also the leave home safe. And leave home safe was implemented smoothly in government buildings. There may be individual cases of breaches, but don't exaggerate those and generalize those breaches. So let's be fair, a vast majority of the civil servants are dedicated to their posts and they know clearly their responsibilities and obligations and they've been doing the best. For those who have not reached the standards or who bridge the rules, we will follow up the cases seriously. We will take disciplinary action if needed. So please rest assured that this is being done. Secretary, please note that the four minute includes questions and answers. Ms. Chow Shu Chong, thank you. I would like to follow up on two questions raised by myself. C S B O O four. In your reply, the secretary for the sixty thousand time limited jobs. Well, half of them come are, the jobs require academic qualification of tertiary education or above, while the remaining half request secondary education or below. But these posts are supposed to be filled by the grassroots. And from the information that I have, sixty five percent of those filling up the posts have secondary education or below. Thirty six percent of those out of job are have tertiary education. So would the government expedite the work of filling up the ten thousand remaining posts? Can you be more flexible in terms of the requirement of academic qualification so that the unemployed can benefit as soon as possible? Another question is related, is C S B zero zero five. Mr. Chen Hong Feng also touched on this. I'm also concerned about the N C S E staff who have worked for five years and ten years. While they take up around thirty percent of all N C S E staff, this is totally undesirable. This means that you have unequal pay for equal work. So will the secretary leave up your efforts in resolving the problem? Can you turn the long N C S, long serving N C S staff into civil servants? Thank you, Mr. Chow. First about the job creation scheme. Around half of them are really grassroots or low paid jobs. And for the government sector, while the jobs created are rather diversified, while some of, well, half of them are really jobs for the grassroots. And during the fight against the epidemic, where there are a lot more jobs created related to fighting the pandemic. We will speed up our work. Well, the original plan is to create thirty thousand jobs in two years, but we have been able to create those jobs in less than two years. So for the remaining ten thousand or so jobs, we will create them as soon as possible. And for the third round of thirty thousand jobs, we will create them as soon as we can. That's number one. Number two, on N C S E staff, we will attach a lot of importance to the issue. For N C N C staff who have worked for long years, whether we would turn them into civil service posts? There are two points. Well, look at the nature of the job. If these jobs are not seasonal and not the those working shotting shot shot hours than the civil servants, we will turn them into civil servants posts. And if there is a non long term need for the post, that will also be turned into a civil service post. We'll have regard to whether we have additional resources. In the past two years, we have been setting the target of zero growth for civil service establishment. So that also impacts on the the plan to turn N C S E staff into civil servants. Anyway, we will conduct a review and if we have the resources and if there is a need, then we will turn N C S E staff into civil servants. Ms. Nyxie Lam, next, please. Thank you, Chairman. It's C S B zero one three. The government has not been making good use of technology during the anti epidemic work. And many of the services are not available online. So how can you ensure that civil servants are trained up in the technology? And then C S B zero one six, many civil servants said that they hope that you can expand on the medical coverage for civil servants. So will the government consider this and can actually the, can you engage the private sector in providing medical benefits to civil servants? Would that help lessen the burden on C S eight? And then there were zero C S B zero three seven, and that is about the bonus link. And you have looked into the cases of five countries. And do these countries implement performance linked bonus? Can Hong Kong consider doing that to further motivate civil servants? First about training, we attach a lot of importance to and training. And one of our, of the main focus is to train, is to train civil servants on information and technology. And the civil service college has been established. So one of our key work areas is to train up civil servants on the use of applied technology. And we would like to build a smart city in Hong Kong. So we hope that the I N T sector can communicate more with the civil service sector so that we can do better. And then about the medical benefits, right now, while these are provided through the public system, can we partner with the private sector? Can we resort to insurance and so on? We would look at that, but this is a rather complicated issue and that cannot be done in a short time. In any case, we will consider the proposals. It's not an easy task. We will look at it. Third is about performance linked bonus. In twenty seventeen, we took a look at the issue, the conclusion back then is that the experiences of other jurisdictions is not applicable in Hong Kong. And we also will be looking into how to improve our performance and appraisal mechanism so that it advances with the times. And then we must be mindful that the job nature in the public sector is different from that in the private sector. Concerning performance linked bonus, well, we do face some constraints in implementing that. But anyway, we have an open mind towards that and see if there is any room for us to improve that. About medical insurance, would you have a timetable to conduct a study on that in twenty seventeen? The study report was not so much on the performance linked bonus system in the reply. It's about the studies on pay level survey and starting pay survey. So these are not, are different from what I mentioned, that is the performance linked bonus. We will be looking at the situation again. As for medical benefits, can we leverage on the private sector and insurance sector to help us out? We have taken the preliminary look at that. Right now, we don't have a timetable. Mr. Jeffrey Lam. Thank you, Chairman. The Civil Service College was inaugurated in December last year. And from twenty twenty to twenty three, various training programs will be organized. The total, total expenditures, seventy one point eight million dollars. And now you haven't announced the appointment of the head of college and when he will come on board. Now, with the development of the pandemic, would that have an impact on the training programs? Do you have any fallback plans? And if yes, what will be the impact on the estimate of expenditure? If there is a surplus or unspent amount, will it be carried over to the next year? And the administration says that the civil service exchange program will be expanded to cover G B A cities. And so that's the, these civil servants can actually work there to get a taste of the jobs. So learning by experience is the best learning model. So has the government assessed the latest situation? And when will the relevant arrangements be implemented soonest? Would you prioritize G B A cities? And if yes, which city will be the first city to start your program? Thank you, Mr. Lam, for your series of questions, first about the Civil Service College and its development. The head of the college, while our recruitment work is nearing its end and our goal is still to announce the appointment in the first half of this year. Second, the pandemic has impacted on our training programs. So we have to make adjustments. Because of the epidemic in the past two years, all the training programs supposedly to be held on the mainland, the exchange activities overseas trainings had to be canceled. And for some local programs, they were held online too. So after the pandemic stabilizes, we hope to resume such face to face or physical training programs as soon as possible. We are leveraging on the online platforms to do our training. For example, in the C L C plus, in twenty twenty one, the viewership is six point two nine million. Compared to twenty nine before the epidemic, there has been a rise of thirty three percent. And in twenty twenty two, we expect the viewership will remain at around six point three million. So we will feed up our resources in online training. Now, because of the pandemic, some of the training budget has not been used up. So we, anyway, we would go by the original estimate, revised estimate, and then the estimate of expenditure, et cetera, to do our budget. Now, as for the exchange programs, so Hong Kong and Macau Affairs Office is coordinating all these. The cities covered used to be Shanghai, Beijing, Hangzhou, another mainland in cities. And going forward, we would also add in some G B A cities because the G B A's development is very important to us. And this is now going on. And we're liaising closely with the Hong Kong Macau Affairs Office and the Guangdong Provincial Government. And hopefully, within this year, the exchange programs can be launched. This is an enhanced version of the exchange program. We used to have such program, but then in terms of the number, the city covers is not as many as we would like to do this year. And we also hope to prolong the stay of the civil servants in the mainland city so that we can achieve better results. Mr. Lam.
Thank you. One free four, I had one three four. It says that the discipline service has completed their grade structure review. And then for some doctor grades, they're also going to do a grade structure review and they will submit the findings to the reference then committee. So what about other grades, civilian grades in particular? Are you going to conduct any grade structure review? Because for some grades, the entry requirement is still, you know, primary six education. But then, you know, the But then, you know, the education qualifications have changed completely. So it seems that the entry requirements are rather outdated. So could there be a great structure review on a larger scale? Understand, of course, is a major operation. It cannot be done in just a few months. It will take years. But then after the social incidents and the pandemic, Hong Kong has to be relaunched. And suicide is also have to has to be relaunched. We need better staff more real. So I hope that you will consider a correct structure review. And then C S B oh one eight on Chinese medicine service. A few years ago, some civil service staff unions formed a concern group on the medical benefits. They've been promoting the creation of Chinese medicine clinics. Now there are two such clinics. And then in reply, it says that there'll be more new civil service clinics. So what what are the locations and what is the timetable? In future, there will be a Chinese medicine hospital in Trunkanor would be linked to that in any way. And as it was going to say, that is difficult to make phone bookings now for such for small medical service. It's saying in paper that there will be a mobile app soon would it then improve the situation? Thank you. First, about the great structural review. If, say, a grade has huge recruitment difficulties or the nature of work has changed substantially. So then there is need to do a great structural review to make sure the posts remain appealing. And also, we need to be specific about the nature of work and so on. Now, sometime ago, we conducted a great structure review on discipline services. The recommendations approved by the Finance Committee have all been implemented. As for the medical offices, a great structure review, they're still ongoing. Because of the epidemic, we see that they sell the severe blow to the healthcare system. So we may have to consider carefully the development of the medical officer grade. So there's something we certainly consider. And but then, of course, the latest event may have affect the timetable of the great structure review. But then for other grades, we would do review if necessary, based on the two principles I mentioned. And that's the basis on deciding whether to proceed with a great structure review. For Chinese medicine services, yes, it's true, the Chinese medicine clinics are very popular. That's why we have quickly completed a review and we have made the pilot scheme now standing scheme. There and for the sixty three thousand quota places, they will gradually be increased to one hundred thousand places. And telephone booking systems been improved and you don't have to wait a long time after you get through to just to be told that there are no places available instead, things will speed up. And also, there's going to be a mobile app and there will be another new civil service Chinese medicine clinic. We are now making a preparation and once the details finalized, we will announce them. So on Chinese medicine surface. And in particular, the Chinese medicine hospital. We'll see if we could set aside a space for a Chinese medicine clinic in the hospital. Thank you. Mister Tony Chair, thank you. In the opening remarks of the secretary, he said there are hundred ninety seven thousand posts in the civil service establishment. Because of the zero growth target, he would encourage bureau and departments to take measures to cope with workload by workload, I suppose it means increase in workload. Now, there are two points here. Streamlining of work processes and enhancing effectiveness and efficiencies, not just encourage them. You have to urge them to do it, to make them do it. I think for many departments, there's plenty of room to streamline work processes and enhance effectiveness and efficiency. You really have to make a department's bureau do something about that. Now on C S B oh three three. Now, it's about the professional staff establishment of the architectural surveying, planning and landscape professions of the the sector I represent. It seems that there are huge gaps, differences among different departments on certain grades. So for example, the rating value, rating valuation department, last department and so on. They seem to have a serious shortage of staff. Would that affect the quality of service they provide? Would it affect the efficiency too of their work? So secretary, I wonder if you have any guidelines or suggestions to them? So the service would not be seriously affected that is first point. Second point for professional grades. In some departments, they may have a need for such professional staff, but there are few of them in the departments. And therefore, these professional staff in the department, what about their promotion prospect? Because in the establishment, there are not higher ranks. And then people in this departments may see no future for their career. First about some streamlining processes and the enhancing effectiveness and efficiency. Yes, I agree, we should do it. It's not just for the Civil Service Bureau to promote that. Every policy bureau and every department under the policy bureau have to review their work processes to streamline them and to enhance effectiveness and efficiency. Another point is about interdepartmental and interbureau coordination so that we could handle issues more effectively and serve the public. Second point on profession on departments with professional grades. Well, different departments may have a different number of vacancies. But for the whole civil service, the target is zero growth. By zero growth doesn't mean we won't be recruiting people. Because every year there will be people retiring or quitting. So every year we'll have vacancies. Every year, on average, we hire about ten thousand people to fill posts vacancies. So each department has to review his own situation. They have to look at the number of vacancies they have and so on. There are several ways they could handle it first. They could speed up equipment, they could do more equipment exercises. And secondly, if there's need to conduct a great structure review to make the grade more appealing, they could do it too and retain talents as well. Third way is that if there's need, there could be posed retirement service contract to rehire retirees and so on. And then for some works departments at the higher levels, the various difference professional grades could be considered for the promotion post. And that will help to enhance the promotion prospects for these grades. Thank you. Mister Quatway Kang. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on my question, C S B oh oh nine. The first sentence of the reply is the key. That is, we have to enhance national studies training for civil servants. But then if you read on, you'll find the is reply rather disappointing and even surprising. Now, because of the epidemic, all mainland exchange programs have been canceled. Well, we could appreciate that, but it seems that there are no alternatives offered. For example, for primary students, secondary students, if they can't go to school, they will have online classes. If you can't have physical exchanges, can't you do on online courses or exchanges instead of just, you know, leaving a void there? This I find is surprising. Because as you say, you know, we don't move forward and we will lag behind. If we want to improve the efficiency effectiveness of governance, we need to boost our decision making capacity. And we also need to boost our capacity to implement policy now in our current structure. We rely on civil servants to implement policy. So we need to strengthen training for civil servants and we need to make this training available to more civil servants. I think for the mainland institutions, as long as you give them clear scope, they're able to provide much information. They may have ready information and also they could offer custom made information. They could respond quickly. There shouldn't be this void for two years. So what's happened really? Are we we're just waiting for the head of civil service college before, you know, we could act? What about those origin charge of these programs? What are they doing now? And how long do we have to drag things on? Because we don't even know when normal cross boundary travel could resume. So will we just, you know, stand still? Secretary, if our reply causes misunderstanding, my apology. Because the replies say that because of the epidemic, so there are some mainland courses that could not go ahead. Well, that's a fact, but then it doesn't mean that we have not done anything. We've actually done them a lot. First, on the national security law constitution, based the country's constitution and basic law training. Well, that's very important. We will keep training civil servants on those aspects. And then during the epidemic, we take the opportunity to consolidate our training systems. And we're also rolling out new initiatives and programs such as some some online courses. For example, we have the lecture series hosted by the Chengdu University on the national development and so on. We're also working, we also worked with the O C M F A every month there is some talk also, and this is very popular and useful. And then in September this year, we're going to start a new master program, executive master public administration program at the Chiang Mai University to boost training. As for the C L C plus, I said that there are six point two nine million hits and increase of some thirty three percent compared to twenty nineteen. And then the national security law. Now, it was propagated in end of June twenty twenty. And so far, we have held over one hundred and sixty talks and seminars and over twenty thousand civil servants attended these sessions. And then online browsing, that's one point seven one million hits. So we are doing a lot, actually. Mister Sunny Ten. Mister Sunny Tang. C S B oh one, a question from by Mister Ronic Chan. That is in twenty twenty two to twenty three, the civil service bureau will include understanding of basic law and national in the reference assessment of the basic law test. So what about serving civil servants? Do they have to take tests on national security law to nexus on C S B oh two five? And enhancing understanding of civil servants of the basic law, national security law and and P R C constitution. This is question asked by Mister Martin Dell. But so far, only twenty thousand and one hundred civil servants took the course. The courses, only ten percent of civil servants, of course, that's far from adequate. So are there any other plans to require civil servants to take a certain number of hours of training?
We will also increase the number of training institutes on the mainland offering training to us. So this will be incorporated in our future training programs. Well, the the assessment also cover non-civil service posts funded by the government. Well, the test is for recruits of the candidates who are applying for posts with the tertiary education requirement. So these are included in the common recruit examination. So these candidates have to be assessed on their knowledge on the basic law and the N S L. After they joined the government, other training programs will be provided. Okay, next one is Mister Daitong Quo. Thank you, Chairman. My follow up question is related to zero one six. And that is medical benefits for civil servants. I'm disappointed to to hear the secretary saying that if changes or what changes in medical services has major policy change. There is no roadmap, no plan to change the arrangement and present, but we'll continue to explore feasible measures in collaboration with H A. Since you mentioned improving, it means that you are not happy with the present service. Well, it is the responsibility of the employer to provide medical service. It is a right of the employee is not a benefit. So if you would say it is a benefit, then it means that it can be there or it can be provided or not provided. If an employee is sick, it means he cannot work. And if he is on sick leave, then he is not productive anymore. So it is important that he receives the appropriate medical treatment and his productivity can be restored. So the government allocates over six billion dollars to the H A, to the H A. This is no, not a small sum. Now you have allocated this some to H A, but then civil servants who have to receive medical attention have to queue along with other members of the public. Now, right now, fifty percent of the healthcare staff in Hong Kong taking care of over ninety percent of the population. And the other fifty percent are taking care of the remaining ten percent of the population. If the governments can allocate this six billion dollars to the private sector and take out insurance for the hundred and ninety thousand civil servants, I believe that you can get med appropriate medical services in the private sector for civil servants. So it is urgent that you should review civil service medical benefits. Not only are this is the civil servants held a stick, it is also related to the use of resources by the government. Can the secretary give me a careful reply? Now, with regard to medical benefits, these are included as part and partial of their employment terms and conditions. And we've been working through the H A to provide the medical benefits. You have rightly pointed out that we have not had, we do not have a breakdown for the expenditure on civil service in the overall allocation to H A. And the civil servants, we get their service at the H A. We know that demand outstrips supply. We have increased the number of clinics and other services. Well, what I meant by major policy changes this, under the new system. Now, after a civil servant has retired, he is not entitled to medical benefits. So if we had to cover them as well, then that means a major policy change. That's what I meant. Now, if we do not work through the H A, can we sort of resort to patronize the private sector by way of buying out insurance for civil servants? We have considered that. Now, as far as medical services are concerned, there are outpatient clinic services, there are acute cases and so on. So the costs for different types of treatment differ substantially. Now, we are paying a lot to for the payment and reimbursement of medical fees to civil servants. So can we do a better job by actually? So can we do a better job by actually engaging the private sector? We have to ask the actuaries to help us to look at the situation. We know where the problem lies and we are very concerned about it. Doctor Wong Man Chan. Thank you, secretary. I will follow up on C S B zero three seven. My question is about reserving funds to examine and assess the development of performance management of the civil service. The secretary says that there is an annual performance appraisal system. And they were monitored, assessed off performance and so on. Now, I would like to ask for more specific details. You, your answer is rather brushed. Now, let me cite this example. If a government department is responsible for building public housing. But then it is not meeting its targets, say, and it's running short of one third of the target. And there have been delays year after year. Say, in the next five years, the supply, twenty percent of the supply will be delayed. And the any waiting, the waiting time for P H is lengthened from three to six years. So for, for those in the department. What would happen to the performance appraisal? Does it mean that the staff concerned put up a poor performance or not? Well, thank you, Doctor Wong, for citing this very specific example. Our performance appraisal system covers the staff's work scope. And we would look on an adult basis, we would look at the focus of the work of the staff concerned, and this will be listed out. And at the middle of the year, we would be appraising the staff's performance in these work areas. What are his or her strengths and weaknesses, how they handle the problems? And the supervisor will assess the performance and do some rating. And then the, so whether the person will be promoted will be based on that kind of assessment. Now, if you talk about the case of building public housing. Now, whether we can achieve the targets of the housing units to be built. Well, well, there are a lot of factors to be taken on board. We have to have the relevant land supply. And in the course of the construction, a lot of bill government departments or external parties have to be involved. For some factors, that will be within your own control, but others beyond, go beyond control. So how can you make a distinction between these sectors that has to be factored in? So in the public body sector, in the public sector and the private sector, there is a difference in the nature of work. Well, in the private sector, you will be looking at the profits made and the, whether you meet the quota. But in the public sector, we are looking at the services provided and so on. So when we set the targets, we have to be very mindful about the special nature of government jobs and we have to be fair. And maybe a work or job involves one, not one department, but other department. And, and also whether the policy was well formulated also affects the implementation results. And actually, how a policy is formulated affects greatly whether the policy can be implemented smoothly. So how can we further improve the performance appraisal system? This is something of concern to me as well. So maybe going forward, I can liaise more with Doctor Wong and those who are experienced in this area. Mister Kingsley Wong. Secretary. My question is this. Zero three six and four seven, that is your number, four seven six. Members have raised concern about the N C S E staff. But those who have worked for over ten years, number is over two thousand. And they are mainly in three departments. First, post office, E M S D, and then Department of Health. Mention a number of factors affecting the length of service. But if the staff have worked for such a long time, it means that there is a genuine need for the post. Why don't you consider turning them into civil service posts? Sometimes you engage consultants to help you out and you are actually asking the people outside the government to do government work. So how much money did you manage to save in employing these N C S E staff? If not, not a lot of money can be saved, why don't you turn these posts into civil service posts? There are a lot of grievances among the N C S E staff in the post office in particular. And also the managed cost, meant costs are so high. It seems that the government is taking the lead to outsource certain work. So for some private companies, they are also using some tactics to do the same. If the performance is not that good. So can you stop the practice of engaging S C N C staff for a long time? And especially for those who have worked for over ten years. Can you consider turning these posts into civil service posts? I believe that you, if you raise such a proposal, it will be backed by a lot of legislators here. Mister Wong, thank you very much. I do, I fully understand where you are coming from. And we are working together with the relevant departments to review the N C S E staff, staff posts. We're mindful about the length of service. If they are found to be working for over five years. Then we will look at whether there is a need to turn them into, in a civil service post. And on the other hand. There are some posts which, oh, stock nature is the season now. And they, these jobs are really under the operation of a trading fund, the M S D, the post office fall into that category. And the nature of the trading fund is that non civil servants will be employed to operate the service. And sometimes with some of the posts, they are under review. So in the interim, the contract, well, N C S E staff will be engaged. At the same time, we'll have to strike a balance. In the past two years, because of the overall situation in Hong Kong. We had zero growth in the civil servants establishments. In the past five years, the civil servants establishment has increased by eleven percent. And if we increase the number to over two hundred thousand. Well, I believe that the public and the council may not agree to that. So we have to be striking a balance.
Mister Ronic Chan, thank you. Mike, I want to ask about C S B O seven O one five and O two three. Now for, oh, oh, so for, you know, for those who are involved in anti epidemic work. People could be given time off and if that's not possible, they will be given allowance for working overtime. But then there are some departments which are concerned that they may not have enough provisions to pay O T allowance. So when departments deploy staff to anti epidemic effort, would that be a consideration? Because in the reply says that seventy percent of civil servants are involved in empty epidemic work. But some thirty percent are not involved as it, as it because to do with insufficient provisions for O T allowance, O two free. C S B O two three. There are some four three three thousand nine hundred and seventy one civil servants who've been infected by COVID nineteen. There's some close to twenty percent of the civil service establishment, civil service strengths. Now, many in the private sector, employees are asked to do an R I T before they go back to the office. But then in the government's reply says that they will have regard to the risk level and the operation of departments before deciding whether to give R I T kits to their staff or during the test. But then, of course, today, tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, the C S appear to be able to do the R I T test. So would the government department give R I T kits to staff? If they come back to, before they come back to office, they must do the test first, especially for some who've been infected before. Thank you. On our anti epidemic work, the civil servants are heavily involved. So we want to maintain emergency initial surface, but now we're slowly resuming normal services. At the same time, our support for anti epidemic effort remains. So that's why there are about seventy percent of our civil servants involved in anti epidemic effort. That's the first one. Second point, departments will make use of their own resources. Because they may take part in anti epidemic work outside of their office hours and we will give them time off or O T allowance. And I've never heard that we post a department runs out of funds for O T allowance. So they have to, to hire someone, they, they cannot deploy the staff to anti epidemic refit. But rather, many civil servants actually take part in anti epidemic effort and also resources managed individually by departments. There is no essential coordination as such. If government, if departments could handle within their expenditure envelope, they would do so. Operating expenses envelope, that is. And of course, we, our first priority concern is about a safe working environment for civil servants. That's important. And every government department will take a good look at that. If some colleagues are involved in high risk work, for example, they have to handle quarantine or isolation exercises, or they come in contact with many people, yes, there will be arrangement for them to take tests. Maybe they have to do an R I T every day before they come into work. So it will make sure that these colleagues are safe, then the workplace is safe too. So it will depend on the individual departments. It's not the case that all hundred eighty thousand civil servants have to do the test every day because not everyone has the need to do so. And of course, for the general public today, Friday, starting today, please do an R I T every day for three days. And if you have test positive, please declare that. Now, there are above forty five thousand civil servants who've been infected. That's twenty four percent of the civil service strength, but over ninety five percent of them have returned to work. Miss, I wanted to allow Miss Melissa of Court to speak. But then it's not possible. So I'm afraid you have to fall on other channels. The next session will start at four forty two.